Father, we come giving you thanks. We come thank you for this opportunity to say this prayer. We ask that you give us wisdom, courage, and guidance to do what's right and what's proper in your eyesight as we conduct our business. On behalf of the citizens of the city of Alexandria, we ask that you bless our president, bless our governor, bless our mayor, bless all of those that serve you. We thank you for those in audience and those that are hearing our deliberations today. We ask a special blessing upon our colleague Chuck Fowler. Ask that we bring him to speed of recovery as soon as possible. These are the blessings with your son Jesus name. Amen.
I thank you. The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we get a roll call?
Mr. Lawson.
Badley.
Mr. Fowler. Mr. Johnson.
President.
Mr. Smith. Mr. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Silver.
President.
Mr. Hobbs. Mr. Marshall.
President.
Mr. President, have a call.
And look at the consent calendar. Hated legal. I move.
Second.
Move by Mr. Lawson, second by Mr. Smith. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. G.
Ordinances for final adoption, subject to public hearing, number 24, to consider final adoption of an ordinance authorizing the mayor to accept the low bid submitted for pre-engineering metal building shed for maintenance equipment storage at the wastewater treatment plant.
Move. Move by Mr. Johnson, second by Mr. Silver. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries.
Number 25, to consider final adoption of an ordinance authorizing the mayor to accept the low bid submitted for operating supplies for the wastewater department.
Rule. Rule by Mr. Smith. Second by Mr. Hobbs. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries.
Number 26, to consider final adoption of an ordinance authorizing the mayor to accept the low bid submitted for electric substation maintenance painting for the electric distribution department.
Move. Move by Mr. Johnson.
Second.
Second by Mr. Smith. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries.
Mr. President, the electric distribution department requests that item number 27 be delayed for two weeks. 28, to consider final adoption of an ordinance authorizing the mayor to accept the low bid submitted for three-phase pad mount transformers for inventory stock.
Move. Move by Mr. Hobbs.
Second.
Second by Mr. Smith. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries.
Number 29, to consider final adoption of an ordinance authorizing the mayor to accept the low bid submitted for operating supplies for the electric distribution department.
Rule. Move. Move by Mr. Smith. Second by Mr. Johnson. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries.
Number 30, to consider final adoption of an ordinance authorizing the mayor to accept the low bid submitted for construction and maintenance materials for various using departments.
Move. Move by Mr. Lawson.
Second.
Second by Mr. Hobbs. Question? All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries.
Mr. President, item number 31 needs to be delayed for two weeks. 32, to consider final adoption of an ordinance authorizing the mayor to accept the low bid submitted for emergency generators for the city emergency operations center located at the city compound.
Move. Move by Mr. Silver.
Second.
Second by Mr. Smith. Question? All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries.
The finance director requests item number 33 be delayed for two weeks. 34, to consider final adoption of an ordinance authorizing the mayor to accept the lowest quote received from Belsco Incorporated for police uniform accessories for the police department.
Move. Move by Mr. Johnson.
Second.
Second by Mr. Hobbs. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries.
Number 35, to consider final adoption of an ordinance rezoning 755 MacArthur Drive from B2 Community Business General to C2 Commercial General Zoning District.
Move by Mr. Silver.
Second by Mr. Hobbs.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries.
Number 36, to consider final adoption of an ordinance rezoning property on Tulane and Brown Streets from SF2 Single Family Moderate Density to DUC Diverse Use Corridor Zoning District to build a range of housing opportunities and business space for mutual participation.
Rule. Move. Move by Mr. Smith. Second by Mr. Johnson. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries.
Number 37, to consider final adoption of an ordinance authorizing acceptance of a 10-foot wide utility servitude located in Lot 9 and 10 of Commercial Center subdivision Phase 4.
Rule. Move by Mr. Smith.
Second.
Second by Mr. Johnson. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries.
Number 38, to consider final adoption of an ordinance authorizing acceptance of a 25-foot utility servitude and an access servitude located in the Oakmont Village Apartments Development situated on Hudson Boulevard.
Rule. Move by Mr. Smith.
Second.
Second by Mr. Hobbs. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. We go into public hearing.
Number 39, to continue public hearings on structures located at 723 Woodard, 2703 Main Street, 510 14th Street, 28 Prosper Street, 320 Gabriel Lane, 43 Eastwood, and 608 13th Street.
You got it, man.
Down with community development. Do recommendations on some things, 28 Prospect, like for it to be deleted and rehired complete by owner.
Rule. Rule for deletion.
Second.
In favor?
Yeah.
Pose.
Then 2703 Main Street, like to continue till March 25th, '08, for the owner to bring in documentation.
Move. Move by Mr. Smith. Second by Mr. Silver. In favor?
Aye.
Pose.
320 Gabriel Lane, same, March 25th, '08, for owner to bring in, uh, proof of documentation.
Move.
Sir.
Move by Mr. Lawson. Second by Mr. Johnson. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose.
608 13th Street, like for the, uh, March 25th for the new owner to complete purchase and then to bring in documentation.
Move. Move, Mr. Lawson. Second, Mr. Smith. Discussion. Favor.
723 Woodard, April 22nd, '08, for the owner to complete repairs.
Move. Move, Mr. Smith.
Second.
Second, Mr. Johnson.
43 Eastwood, continue till June 17th, '08, for the owner to complete repairs.
So move. Move, Mr. Smith.
Second.
Second, Mr. Johnson.
510 14th Street, June 17th, '08, for owner to complete repairs.
So move.
Second.
Move, Mr. Smith. Second, Mr. Lawson.
All in favor.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose.
For 28 Prospect, there was a motion by Mr. Lawson, second by Mr. Smith to delete the item. We need a vote.
Couple of questions.
All in.
Pose.
Then for 2703 Main Street, 320 Gabriel Lane, and 608 13th Street, they were all continued to March 25th, and we were properly, uh, motions made properly in seconds. We need a vote.
You can hold on.
No, we, yeah. All in favor.
All in. Pose. Motion carries.
For 723 Woodard was, uh, continued to April 22nd, a motion by Mr. Smith, second by Mr. Johnson.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries.
Then we have 43 Eastwood and 510 14th Street, were both continued to June 17th, and moved by Mr. Smith, second by Mr. Johnson. Need a vote.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries.
Okay, we need to close the public hearing.
Public hearing is not our place. Committees?
Finance Committee, Mr. Lawson.
Yes, uh, we have a proclamation down there, yeah? Maybe after we go through committees. I think we have, uh, finance a couple of, cause economic about.
No, yeah. No report on finance. Public Works, Mr. Silver.
Are you finished, Myron?
I am Castro.
I have a resolution that the Public Works recommended, whereas the city of Alexandria has various ordinances impacting where the developmentally disabled are able to live in community homes, whereas the definition of community homes versus the definition of group homes in the current city of Alexandria, ordinances may need to be clarified and updated. Whereas the federal government has enacted the Federal Fair Housing Act and amendments thereto that preempt state legislation and local ordinances on the subject of where community homes are allowed to be located, and makes it illegal for public entities to act arbitrarily against choice of living locations for the developmental, developmentally disabled, whereas the city of Alexandria desires to be in compliance with the Federal Fair Housing Act and amendments thereto, and may need time to study and amend the various ordinances that impact where community homes can be located within the city of Alexandria. Now therefore be it resolved that the city of Alexandria may issue zoning permits to applicants for community homes to be located in SF1, SF2, and SF3, providing they are accompanied by a special exception from the Board of Adjustments and Appeals, as well as other zoning districts until such time as the zoning ordinances can be amended to ensure compliance with the Federal Fair Housing Act and amendments thereto. Be it further resolved that the city of Alexandria ordinances currently impacting the community homes be completely reviewed, and that recommendations for amendments to said ordinances be brought back to the city council as soon as reasonably practical.
Second. Who's that? All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Carries.
Legal Committee, Mr. Hobbs.
No report.
Utility Committee, Mr. Johnson.
No report.
Community Development, Mr. Hobbs.
No report.
Personnel Insurance, Mr. Johnson.
No report.
Public Safety, Mr. Johnson.
No report.
A&E Review, Mr. Silver.
No review.
Economic Development, Mr. Lawson.
So I have two ordinances and a resolution. A resolution allowing the city of Alexandria to accept and receive donation of reclaimed asphalt pavement from the state of Louisiana. Move.
Second.
Ordinance authorizing the mayor.
Need to check about.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose.
Motion carries.
Motion carries.
Have an ordinance authorizing the mayor into, and to, entered into a cooperative endeavor agreement with the state of Louisiana to accept and receive donation of reclaimed asphalt pavement for the state of Louisiana. Move.
Second.
Move by Mr. Lawson. Second by Mr. Johnson.
Introduce.
Introduce.
The move for introduction.
Okay. Ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a six-month extension of the Southern Linkade contract. Move.
Second.
By Mr. Johnson.
May for change.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Okay. I guess you want to the resolution.
Barbara told me behave this meeting, someone behave, ain't Barbara. I think the mayor has some distinguished ladies in the audience, and I'm noting that it's not St. Patrick's Day. There's still a lot of green. And they're looking mighty lovely in their green.
Okay. Thank you. No, it's not St. Patrick's Day, Councilman Lawson. My name is Vaughn Jennings, and I serve as the mayor's assistant, but I'm also the president of the Alexandria-Pineville Women's Commission, and each year in the month of March, we celebrate Women's History Month. So this month, we have a series of activities that are occurring throughout the month, one of which has occurred at the Boys and Girls Club. The Women's Commission did a presentation to the young ladies and young men at the Boys and Girls Club on Women Entrepreneurs, which is our theme, our local theme for this year. On Friday, you all may have heard that the Alexandria chapter of the Links will present the Wong Dance Company at the Kaufman Saunders Theater. It is an international multicultural dance company from New York City that will be here in Alexandria performing, and we're very fortunate that one of our hometown girls, Dana Johnson, whom is the daughter of Judge Donald Johnson, and Kathy Sales Johnson is one of the performers. Tickets are free to the public, and if anyone is interested in a ticket and do not have one, you may call the Lawverdane office at 445-6717. Also this month, we have a women's networking event that will be held at the Office of Kelly Works Personnel Solutions on Tuesday, March 25th. On Thursday, March, the Little Black Dress Party will be on, um, the date is escaping me. Um, on the last event, the month will culminate with the Annual Women's History Month Luncheon, which will be held here in City Hall on Monday, March 31st at 11:30 a.m. The Little Black Dress Party will be held on the 22nd, the 20th, excuse me, on Thursday, March 20th, at the corner office located downtown. I'd like to recognize the ladies that are members of the Women's Commission. If you all can stand, please.
Right.
Kind of laid over here. Kimberly Darrell, Kelly Wilson, Pat Buckholton, and Angie Toll. There are some other members of the commission that wasn't able to be here this evening, and the mayor will read proclamation.
You want to read it?
Okay, I'll read. Oh, you can read this one, I'll read the other.
I was going to defer to Ms. Jennings since it's, given the subject matter. I did make one, one change, and they sent it to me. When we get to the last one, and I'll tell you when I get there, it's kind of funny. "Whereas American women of every race, class, and ethnic background have made historic contributions to the growth and strength of our nation in countless recorded and unrecorded ways; and whereas American women have played and continue to play a critical economic, cultural, and social role in every sphere of the life of the nation by constituting a significant portion of the labor force working inside and outside of the home; and whereas American women have played a unique role throughout the history of the nation by providing the majority of the volunteer labor force of the nation; and whereas American women were particularly important in the establishment of early charitable, philanthropic, and cultural institutions in our nation; and whereas American women of every race, class, and ethnic background served as early leaders in the forefront of every major progressive social change movement; and whereas American women have been leaders not only in securing their own rights of suffrage and equal opportunity, but also in the abolitionist movement, the emancipation movement, the industrial labor movement, the civil rights movement, and many other movements, especially the peace movement, which created a more fair or a fairer and just society for all; and whereas despite these contributions, the role of women in history has been at times overlooked and undervalued in the literature, teaching, and study of American history. Now therefore, I, Jacque Roy, Mayor of the city of Alexandria, along with the Alexandria City Council, do hereby proclaim the month of March 2008 as Women's History Month." The last one was "whereas these, despite these contributions, the role of women in history has been at times overlooked." When they sent it to me, it actually said "all the time," or "at all times." So for the men, I did take out "all" as the. Vaughn put that in there. Just before she asked for that raise. I think she did. But to my chief of staff, who is a woman, I'm proud to serve with, and to Ms. Jennings, who is at the top level of our staff, whom I'm also proud to serve with, and to my wife, Wendy, who is here, that I'm proud to have as the partner that I will cherish most in my life, thank you to the women that help us get through everything we do, and thank you for all that you do to support our nation, our state, and our city. Congratulations. Very good.
During the month of March, the Women's Commission also partners with other organizations and agencies in the community that serve women, and this year, we'd like to recognize one of the organizations in the community that gives countless hours of volunteer service to Alexandria, Central Louisiana, and the country, and internationally. I'd like to recognize the ladies of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated. Would you all please stand?
All right.
Continue to stand, please. The Office of the Mayor proclamation, "Whereas Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated was founded on the campus of Howard University on January 15, 1908; and whereas Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated is America's oldest premier Greek-letter organization established by African-American college-trained women; and whereas Alpha Kappa Alpha's influence extends beyond university campuses and has a legacy of service that deepens rather than ends with college graduation; and whereas Alpha Kappa Alpha's nucleus of more than 200,000 college-trained women in 882 chapters in 50 states, the U.S. Virgin Islands, the Caribbean, and five countries, West Africa, the Bahamas, Germany, Korea, and England; whereas the Alexandria chapter of Alpha Kappa Alpha was chartered as a graduate chapter by members residing in Alexandria, Louisiana on February 26, 1955; and whereas the Alexandria chapter of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority, along with its sister chapter in Pineville, Louisiana, unselfishly provides thousands of hours of volunteer service on an annual basis to the communities of Central Louisiana; and whereas the objectives of which Alpha Kappa Alpha was created are to cultivate and encourage high scholastic and ethical standards, to promote unity and friendship among college women, to alleviate problems concerning girls and women, to maintain a progressive interest in college life, and to be of service to all mankind. Now therefore, I, Jacque and Roy, Mayor of the Alexandria, city of Alexandria, Louisiana, and the Alexandria City Council, along with the Alexandria City Council, salute Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated for 100 years of service to all mankind, and do hereby proclaim the month of March 2008 as National Women's History Month."
Stand up for that.
It is also my pleasure to introduce to you the Regional Director of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated for the South Central Region, Ms. Tari Bradford.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, everyone who's gathered here, first of all, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
It's indeed a pleasure to address you all and let you know what Alpha Kappa Alpha is all about, and I think Vaughn basically gave you a brief history, and as any one of us in this room know that history goes on and on and on of the great works, not only that Alpha Kappa Alpha has done, but all organizations in this great state and in this great country. Mr. Mayor and the council, let me first thank you all for recognizing Women's History Month, for without women, there probably would not be any history.
All right.
Now, one would say, which came first, the egg or the chicken? That's up for you legal minds to decide. But we also know behind every great man is a great woman. Therefore, with that said, Mayor, I think you will attest to that by looking at your chief executive officer and the other ladies who serve with you. Hopefully, Mayor, within the next few years, we will have a woman on the council. I will now move on to other great things of women. As women continue to make history, Alpha Kappa Alpha continues to lead the way, and once again, I want to recognize the men on the council because they know the great attributes that all women bring to any organization and to any service. Women's History Month is very important because we, as women, have done so much, and if we look at our leadership in the state of Louisiana, not only to mention once again the chief executive officer here, you have Sybil Holt now, who lives in Alexandria, who was once not only the secretary, but the leading officer for AFL-CIO. You have Senator Mary Landrew, who's the first elected woman to serve as the United States Senator for the state of Louisiana, and the list goes on and on when we talk about the contributions of great women, not only African-American women, but white women as well. We all are women, and therefore, we have a great deal and a great sense of pride that we carry, not only in our state, but in the country. Alpha Kappa Alpha has a great sense of pride. I serve as the Regional Director, which consists of, consists of Louisiana, Texas, Arkansas, and New Mexico. That's only the volunteer side of my life. In my professional duties, I serve as Deputy State Director for United States Senator Mary Landrew. Therefore, my commitment is deep with women, with organization, and with giving back to service to our communities. Alpha Kappa Alpha region consists of, as I said, Louisiana, Texas, Arkansas, and New Mexico, and good mayor, I want to let you know that Ms. Vaughn Jennings has been racking my brains today, along with your tourist bureau chairperson, on what I can do, not only in my capacity as Deputy State Director for Senator Landrew, but as Regional Director for Alpha Kappa Alpha to increase economic development and to bring in African-American tourism with sororities and fraternities. I've left numbers with the tourist bureau to show that our numbers are great. This is an untouched market, sir. This is a market that you and the council need to really consider touching, and by touching this market, that means you go out to events where there are multicultural events going on, and you touch these groups because economics is money, and money has no commitment to no color, no religious affiliation. It's all about bringing your city together, and that's one thing Alpha Kappa Alpha believes in, is diversity and bringing communities together, making communities stronger, better, but more so, educating our children and providing them the things that they need so that they can be productive citizens and be sitting in the spot that you gentlemen are sitting in in the near future. Thank you for celebrating Women's History Month. Thank you for celebrating 100 years of service for Alpha Kappa Alpha, and trust me, should we come and land any convention in your city, sir, I think your convention tourism director will tell you, our numbers are good, you just have to have the place to house us. Thank you.
And let the record reflect, Ms. Vaughn Jennings, that Ms. Tari Bradford, the head of your regions are Southernites, by the way. Can't get my eye on that. I knew Suzie was going to say that. I love my Grelle nights.
Right now, I'd like to have a couple people that signed up, Ms. Gwendolyn Elmore.
Gwendolyn Y. Elmore.
Sandra Bright. Ms. Elmore, you're first.
Many people know me as Gwendolyn Y. Elmore.
I said the Y.
Y. Gwendolyn Young Elmore. It's still afternoon. Good afternoon, gentlemen. I'm pleased to address you regarding of the Anna Bon ton African-American Museum and Cultural Arts Center. The Anna Bon ton African-American Museum and Cultural Arts Center, the historical childhood home of Anna Gwendol Bon ton, nationally-renowned black poet, author, scholar, historian, and librarian. The home was established as the first African-American museum in the state of Louisiana, and is listed on the National Register of Historic Places. The museum is also the only African-American site listed in Rappide's Parish on the National Register. The mission of the museum is to further knowledge of the literary legacy of Anna Gwendol Bon ton, and to promote awareness of African-American history and culture among diverse audiences through programs in the humanities and arts. Gentlemen, and ladies and gentlemen, I'm pleased to announce that the museum was recently selected for the Louisiana African-American Heritage Trail by the Louisiana Department of Culture, Recreation, and Tourism. of Culture, Recreation, and Tourism. In the letter from Lieutenant Governor Mitch Landrieu, we did attend a conference, a news conference, recently in Shreveport. He states, "Congratulations. I'm pleased to announce that the Anna Bon Temps African-American Museum is part of the inaugural launching of the Louisiana African-American Heritage Trail. This is all a part of African-American history." Many of you perhaps wonder why I had a script to follow, but those of you who know me when I talk about the Anna Bon Temps African-American Museum and Cultural Arts Center, that it could go on just a bit more. And this is the map. We're listed as number 18. We're number 18 because the historical sites begin with South Louisiana. Needless to say, I did ask the Lieutenant Governor, "Well, why not Central Louisiana?" Inasmuch as not only are we in the center of the state of Louisiana, but we also have the first African-American museum in the state of Louisiana. He did explain to me, and I did accept that on behalf of us here. Now, I'd like to present you with a copy of the letter from, if you will, from the Lieutenant Governor, as well as a copy of the map. And I would like to express our appreciation for your support of the Anna Bon Temps African-American Museum and Cultural Arts Center, as well as other nonprofit organizations that make a difference in the lives of those of us who live in Central Louisiana. Any questions, gentlemen?
Lieutenant Governor started it all in New Orleans, where he's from.
Yes, we're going to work on that, too, because this is inauguration of the site. This provides us also an opportunity to identify other African-American sites that should be included on the National Register of Historic Places. And there are any number of sites here in Alexandria. We do have a form that we can make available to you so that you can apply for the National Register of Historic Places. As I look in the audience, I see a member of Shiloh Baptist Church, and that has been of some concern, actually rescuing, restoring, and establishing that particular site on the African-American, not only on the African-American Heritage Trail for Louisiana, but also on the National Register, and it does deserve proper recognition. Thank you for this opportunity.
Okay.
I'd like to say something for a minute, Ms. Bright. Ms. Elmore, you've done an outstanding job, and I'd like to congratulate you on the work that you've done down there with the museum. And I'm quite sure my colleagues feel the same way. You've done an outstanding job.
When is Jazz on the River?
Jazz on the River is April 19.
April 19.
The Anna Bon Temps African-American Museum will be presented the 14th Annual Jazz on the River. This year, it will be a tribute to Alvin Baptiste, a New Orleans, a New Orleans jazz legend. It was Alvin Baptiste, along with Bill, Bill Blines, who performed at the inauguration of Jazz on the River. So we think that this is naturally most fitting. Performing with him also will be encore performance by Michael Ward. Is this the appropriate time to say that, even though the event is free and open to the public, that there will be tables reserved? You may reserve tables if you choose to.
Okay. I ran into Randy Jackson from American Idol Brother, and he told me he would be here playing honoring Alvin Baptiste. I thought that was very good that it'd be happening here in our city.
That's great, because one of the things that Bill Blines informed us is that he was going to try to organize this ensemble comprised of those who once performed as a student of Alvin Baptiste.
Perhaps he may want to dance with that.
Oh, dude.
And Mr. Silver, I will say not call names, but I did see a few people who are in here now who were dancing at the last Jazz on the River.
I thought he was having muscle spasm.
Turn the mic off.
I don't know if I should come after all the entertainment y'all have been here. I just have a couple of comments. One comment is to congratulate the Anna Bon Temps African-American Heritage Museum. And to put a little bug in your ear, that since we have this designation, we have our government-access television, and this will be some good information on the government-access television, like when they have the little film with Kent House, Engle Air Park, and whatever, you know, also the Quiz Bowl. We also have these gateway signs. People are passing by, they may need to know that this is one, number 18, on the Heritage Trail. Hotel motels, when I travel, in the rooms, they usually have little informational-type brochures that tell you some historic things that are in the area. And I try to visit those, but that was on this other subject. Now, back down to business. I guess it's been last month, we had a meeting with the Ruston, about the Ruston Foundry, and since then, there has been cleanup. A lot of progress. Hopefully, by the end of the year, the cleanup will be completed. This enters another segment. After cleanup, what's next? Our neighborhood group has been pushing for some economic development, because we are one of the four or five blighted areas that, in the inner city, that we don't have stores, we don't have a grocery store, we don't have a lot of other things. In the newspaper, there's been a lot of discussion about this tip, this tip, tap, or whatever. But I'm concerned that we are looking at things that are, that could impact us not doing some things that need to be for economic development for our area. We know that the hotel motel business, I mean, the hotels have some concerns because of where the lack of boundaries or where the boundaries were not. But whatever the boundaries are, I want them to include Lower Third Neighborhood. We have Sonya Quarters, we have a lot of other things. Now, I go to other cities, and I, Lee Charles, New Orleans, Shreveport, they have all these, these different things on the riverfront downtown. We're in the center of the state, and we don't have these things. So I'm wondering, what is the problem? We have all these educated people, we got all these heads here, and this is not happening. So there is a problem somewhere. So we need, as a community, to get together, compromise some kind of way, so that we can get some kind of tax increments or whatever it needs for some economic development. Because if you want to start on the marina at this end, we need to turn some dirt on this end. Because when you build a bridge, you start from different directions, and you come in in the middle. So I'm serious about my neighborhood and economic development, and I hate to go visit other cities and see what they have, and we have a lack of. We got all of this other stuff, the museum, but downtown, there's nothing for someone to come and visit. So we have to do something if we want the city to improve and to get economic development. Some ask it, the administration, the council, whoever that's sitting in the audience that got some brilliant ideas to have this to be accomplished. Because like I said, I don't know anything about tip. I know that we need to have some economic development. And whatever that we can do to get some business here, whether giving them some tax credits, we need to consider. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Well, ma'am. I got one thing I'd like to also say, and this, I'm going to make it very quick. Nancy? I'd like for the people in the audience to know that this being Women's Month, also, I'd like to recognize the two ladies to keep the city council going. Our two ladies, Ms. Jones and Ms. Thales, Ms. Thales being our clerk, they are the actual keepers of the history of Alexandria. These two ladies you see here are actually the gatekeepers of this city. The transaction from this meeting, they maintained that. And if you want to go back and look at some of the history of the city, they got it back there, and they maintain all of it. So I'd like to congratulate y'all on the job well done. Thank you for all the changes.
You got some kids, didn't you?
You got a youth group?
Yeah. Mr. Franklin, man.
Mr. Franklin.
Good evening. We have the Alexandria...
Could you step to the podium, Mr. Franklin?
We have the Alexandria Youth Advisory Council. They're here, we would like them to stand. Justin Beasley, he's our president, and we would like for him to come forward, and he'll say a few words. Justin Beasley, he's our president.
Great speaker.
How y'all doing to this? The president, city councilor, mayor. It's a great opportunity and privilege to be here today. I'm here with a few of my council members. We're all really busy with jobs, schools, athletics. So a lot of our other councilmen are at tennis matches and at track matches. So we just wanted to get a deeper understanding and knowledge of how the city government runs, you know, more focused, more on, you know, issues for our youth and stuff. So again, it's a pleasure to be here. And I'd like to just introduce the members of our council that's here. If y'all would stand, please. You have Nick, Bruce, and Maya, who are here. And we're 12-member council from each district, just like the city council. And we're here to, you know, better improve issues for our teens. So again, it's a pleasure to be here, and thank you for having us.
I want to address, I know Ms. Bryce was talking about economic, you know, development, things like that. We know that in Shreveport and the way they develop downtown, because they have, as you know, they got gambling, they have the casinos and all that, and one time, they were in the red, and now they're in the black. And when we talk about the progress of the city of Alexandria, what we have to realize is that our growth in the city, we've been staying at an average of 46,000 to 48,000 people, and we never reached that. And the mayor has stressed about building back in the city. As you look at the Lower Third Area, if you hear tonight about Tulane and Brown Street, where Scott Island Baptist Church is trying to develop in houses, and they're developing, they want to develop a grocery store. As you look on Hudson, you see more people are moving back into that area, River Bend, you look at on Hudson Boulevard, and you look at Lawson Hikes, and you look at the Senior Citizen Gateway that's on Hudson. So we're trying to, at one time, we had people moving outside of the city of Alexandria. What we're trying to do now is we moving back, and we are progressing more in that area. And a lot of people, I'm just saying, as politicians go around and, you know, give you false hope for a vote. We didn't have, as you traveled a long time ago, you used to go to Lafayette and all these other places, and they had Applebee's, Outbacks, and all these places. But the volume of traffic was at 51,000 a day. We didn't get this till our volume of traffic moved. They're not going to put these, McDonald's had done a feasibility study. And it's not enough people, you know, sometime, when we did the census, and we were elected, we moved the lines, like in my area, District 3, we didn't have, but we were looking for 10,000 people. And we capped out at 9,000, because we had to divide all of the areas of the council, and that's the amount of people that we have. And a store, any other entity is not going to come in there and just depend on those amount of people. And politicians, they go around false hope, "Oh, we're going to get..." That's not true. They ought to tell you the truth. And that's what we're trying to do. The mayor is trying to get, and his council is trying to move people back into the city. And that's why you see this massive bill, we're trying to bring Sugar House Road, $20 million, Lincoln Road, $2.5 million, and we're moving that. We're going to do a gateway from St. James Street to Broadway, $2.5 million, and the city's putting up $700,000, they say 3.5 million. So we opening up, and we doing infrastructure. And that's one thing that's been hurting, that infrastructure in this town, and we're trying to get people in, that's what we working for. You know, on the river, you know, with a water park, I mean, not a water park, but we trying to get boats and all this type of stuff for development downtown. So that's what we're trying to do, and we need y'all help. And in government, it takes some time, but we moving. So we really encouraging people to move back into the city. And that's the only way that we're going to move forward. And we have some, we have some plans. And we welcome, you know, these conventions and all this. You know, I hope the AKA, my wife was AKA, and, you know, these AKA can get some money out of me, I'll tell you that. And a real good organization. But we willing, you know, to work with you all, and any other organization. So I want to pass that on to you, that you're going to see a difference. So, I mean, we just hope that you all, you know, work with us. But if you see the progress and the growth that's going on in the town with new buildings, you know, we moving and getting people back into our area. So, thank you, Ms. Bright.